Yes. Yes, way back was the hotel. The spiral staircase.
We're just setting up now. And we're probably gonna do our two items of business. Regular work session. Do I pause it?
Yeah, just pause that, because that's just.
Okay, can I now shrink it and go back?
Yeah.
Who's typing? Do we have any messages?
Wait on the chat.
I guess not. We don't really, actually, we don't operate that. I didn't bring a pen. Yes, I did. You're not gonna be on. Oh, you're not on?
I didn't bring my computer, so.
So when you, what we'll do is.
Do you know what it look like? I'll just talk loud.
I'll turn it like this. Yeah, there we go.
Okay.
Perfect. Got it? This is not gonna be a long meeting if you wanna share a computer. Is everybody set?
Yes.
Okay, welcome to the March 2nd special meeting, otherwise known as our regularly scheduled work session on the first Wednesday of the night. If you could just help me salute the flag, I'd appreciate it. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And please, before you sit again, why don't we have a moment of silence for all those poor people in the Ukraine that the pictures were horrible of today? They can stop it soon. Thank you very much. Everybody, please be seated. Now, we're having a special meeting tonight. We have two orders. We have one order of business that we, as far as a resolution, and it's a voting session, so we're going to take up another order of business continuation from the previous meeting. And then we're gonna kind of move into, let me turn that off. We're gonna move into our just our regular work session mode. I've got some things to update you on, and we'll talk about the next, the agenda meetings' agenda. Okay?
Sure.
All right. Well, first, by way of introduction, on the February 16th meeting, we discussed the planning board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Cardinal Lemme, for being here tonight. The planning board has often come to the town board and asked us to give them little assistance in the town center zone. And so we discussed this then, and we've discussed it with the planning board members individually, the need to take a pause or establish a moratorium in the area so that we can analyze the town center zone, analyze the barriers to applicants, as to why it's not working, make any changes the town wants that's consistent with the master comprehensive plan. We're not gonna go outside of what's already in that plan. So we're gonna be doing things that are consistent. In addition to the moratorium on the town center zone, we have hired a planner. Well, we've rehired. We've had a planner before, and then she left, and now we have a new one. So our planner is also going to help us. And the town board, we all need to get involved in this, especially some of you guys that are very, you know, really knowledgeable. And we're looking at the design standards for town roads. Private, well, we already have the design standards for town roads. We're gonna be looking at the design standards that we wanna consider for private roads and common driveways. So the discussion has been about raising the standards of those so that they match the towns because of the water and the problems we've had. So those are the two items that we are going to be reviewing during this moratorium period. So tonight, I'm gonna ask our councilman, Kevin Derland, if you would take it from there as far as what we're doing tonight and. But the. Got it?
All right. So the resolution of introduction. Supervisor Moss reported on two development issues at the February 16th meeting. First, her research indicates that the 2002 creation of the Town Center TC District was aimed at assuring the town of Unionville residents that have town-based mixed institutional, community service, commercial, residential, and other uses readily available to them. However, many of those needs can now be met in neighboring towns. Planning Board Chairman Cardinal Lemme reports that several applicants and potential applicants advise that today other allowed uses and combinations of allowed uses in that general area contain too many barriers for owners while planning and town board members question why our code would enforce a type of commercial building that our residents neither need nor want in that location today. Ms. Moss further reported after consulting with the highway superintendent and town board members regarding concerns that common driveways and privately owned roads, which are not constructed to full-town highway specification, could present property owners in the town with long-term safety, upkeep, and access issues. Ms. Moss suggested that the town board review both the TC district and the common driveway and private road issues with an eye to seeing how they should be modified. In order to allow this review and public input, she suggested the adoption of a 90-day moratorium on the consideration of applications for and the issuance of approvals, variances, and permits for the uses currently allowed in the TC zone, and also for private roads and common driveways in the town. Having a short moratorium, which could only be extended for good cause, also assures that potential applicants will not be spending money and time to meet standards which might be modified. To adopt a moratorium, which is the type of local law, the municipal home rule requires a public hearing.
Councilman. Well, if you, there was that other paragraph behind your computer.
What's that?
It's behind your computer, right there.
Oh, all right.
That's the public hearing that you're gonna tell us about.
Okay. I'm moving to adopt the resolution of introduction to authorize imposition of a moratorium in town center zones, pause all activity in order to review areas for applicants in this zone, along with reviewing private roads and private driveway standards. Resolution of introduction in the local law will be on the website for months. The public hearing will be April 6th at 7:00, but everyone can come and share their views. Sorry about that.
Perfect.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, is there any discussion about this? Since we've been through it a couple of times, anybody, any discussion? All right, roll call vote.
I have one, just one question. So we have, we're going for 90 days?
Yeah.
Is it issue if we went for longer than 90 days?
We will just extend it for another 90. Yeah, that's in the writing here. Yeah.
If we have to, yeah.
And, but keep in mind, the 90 days begins when this becomes official. Our public hearing is on April the 6th, and we wanna hear what a lot of these owners have to say and other residents about maybe what they think the area should look like, or whatever they have opinions about. And then if we vote on it that night, if we feel like, you know, it shouldn't be voted on that night, because we're all pretty much on the same page, then the 90-day clock starts then. And if we run out of time, then we can extend it. Good question. People are gonna wonder about that. Any other questions or discussions? All right, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Derland.
Aye.
Councilman Gusevka.
Aye.
Councilman McGibney.
Aye.
Councilman Welsh.
Aye.
Superintendent Moss.
Aye. Okay, that's what says. Now, this resolution of introduction and the Exhibit A, which is the actual local law, will be on the left. Until then, and anybody wants a copy, you can have mine. It'll be right here. So you can take that home if you don't wanna read it on the web, but then people will have plenty of time to look at it. And then the interesting part will be after the moratorium, when we come back after this input from the planner, and we come back and share with everybody what the recommendations are from the planning board, from the planner, from the town board. And I think that'll be a really fun discussion to see, you know, hear what people think about that. So we're gonna file this with the county this evening. Our town clerk is ready to go, and then the clock starts ticking, and we'll see everybody on April 6th. So our next order of business is to discuss some project that Councilman Gusevka has been working on, and I will, I will give one update to lead into this. The last town board meeting, we were talking about the amount of litter that had been dropped off at West Coast Mountain Road that Sue Kilcrease alerted us to. And then, three days later, one of the, one of the staff members was driving by there and saw another eight bags. So within four days of each other, there were 16 plus eight bags, 24 bags dropped, and they all looked identical. They were those white kitchen bags. Now, the interesting thing is, is that, and this is what's gonna lead in, I'm giving you a good lead-in here, councilman. They, we did call the sheriff's office, and we'll talk, we'll tell everybody about this at the regular board meeting, because that's when people actually listen. But we did call the sheriff's office, and the deputy sheriff is on the case and has found some information out that is gonna be important. And when that's definitive, and they finish, and they wrap it up, we'll let everybody know what they found. But the good news is that they, you know, they're, they're on it, and they feel like they, you know, might be able to catch somebody, which means that we, I don't wanna speak for them, but they were happy. So we'll wait to hear what they say, and then you take it from here.
So we kinda spoke about this a bit, and I think as a great deterrent, it's a, it's a great road, West Coast Mountain Road. People use it. It's a hiking trail, but people walk it dogs, and walk along it. It's a beautiful road. So this is not the first time this has happened, and hopefully, I'm sure it won't be the last time. But as a deterrent, we've spoken about this, that I possibly, we'll put a couple of trail cameras out there that'll link to a person's cellphone. So in the event that somebody does dump something, we'll have a camera on each end of the road. We could possibly get a license plate, figure out who it is. I think I'm also for, I haven't spoken to anybody else, but having a couple of signs out there along the road, letting people know that the place is on the surveillance. I think that's a deterrent as well.
Sure.
And hopefully, we, we end this. I mean, there's definitely one particular person that feels like that's a perfect place to dump. We don't wanna make it, make it a perfect place to dump. We wanna keep it nice and clean. So hopefully, this, I think it's a pretty inexpensive way to resolve it, and we'll go.
Can you walk us through, yeah, walk us through these?
Yeah, so then I put three different cameras on here, just so the audio is a little bit better.
Turn it up.
Can you hear me now? Okay, sorry. So I looked at a bunch of different cameras. I picked out three. They're pretty foolproof. Not too expensive, but they get great reviews. They work well, easy to manage and maintain. So we'll open up a small application with the cellphone company, not too expensive for the town. And we'll move on from there. I think any one of these choices are fine. There's a lot of them out there on the market, but these seem to work pretty well.
What's a, the Multrie? The Multrie Mobile Delta Base has a monthly service charge. It's completely different. Someone, what is that? That must do something special. What's that?
So some of these, they have different packages that you can add extra cameras on there.
Because we only wanted one, right?
Well, we need, we definitely, for West Coast Mountain Road, we definitely need two, so.
But we're also gonna do Tompkins.
We could do Tompkins, so we were talking about getting three cameras.
Three, and then they, they're movable.
Mm-hmm. If we feel a need to take them and put them in another location, then, you know, that's fine. It's not a definitive spot, so.
Is that enough?
I would like to get them also somewhere in the park, like near the boathouse or somewhere.
Okay.
Where it's been an ongoing issue with vandals and.
Yeah.
Intruders.
Harry, was there any one of these cameras that have like a higher megapixel or higher zoom where we can actually get the IP on, on somebody?
As you, you know, depending on the placement of the, of the camera, but if you ever, you ever see cameras, the pictures that come on these cameras, I'll tell you, they're, they're, they're pretty good for having a camera posted on a post or a tree out there. They'll pick up pretty clearly.
Yeah, but for the way you are, it's harder to see.
Well, you could zoom, you could, you know, depending upon where you upload these photos to, you're able to zoom in, and the clarity is pretty good. So I've used them a lot in the past.
Like, did one had higher megapixel or higher zoom than the others?
These three right here are above, they're not the lowest tier. There are cheaper cameras than this, but for that point, I don't think it would be sufficient for us. So these have a decent camera on them where you can zoom in on it, and I think it'll show enough clarity that we could pick up a license plate or definitely the car that's passing by, which will give us some good information and track down somebody like that.
By the way, this is exactly what the sheriff's department suggested that we do.
Oh, yeah.
Said you really, and I said that we had been talking about it in our meeting, and we were.
Yeah. I think it's an inexpensive, quick fix to this problem.
Yeah, sounds like it.
So.
Yeah.
I'm not familiar with these cameras, so I go to the cheapest one. No, I'm just kidding. I won't go to the cheapest.
No, I'll go to the cheapest one.
I, because you said they're all good, but what I'd like is just make a recommendation, because I, I I'm not familiar with them, but you use them all the time. You guys probably all know them.
I don't, but.
They're relatively close. One's 150, basically.
Yeah.
The other one's 210, basically, and the other one is 170.
But if you look at it, so that one, the one for 169 has the solar panel included, which the others, well, the first one is definitely the cheapest one, the Multrie. It doesn't.
They added the solar price when I was quoting that, like 150, 210, and 170.
And, and what's the service for, the monthly service, the $15?
It's the, it's the cell service, because.
So we can go to the phone?
So it could go directly to somebody's phone. I think actually, it'll, you'll put a SD card in, but it'll also go to somebody's phone, whoever, whoever we program it to.
It would be George, George Tregel.
Cell service from around Verizon or something?
Yeah, yeah, you'll have, it depends on the type of phone, whether it's a Droid or a, or an iPhone, and then you pick the service package that you want. It's pretty simple.
Yeah, if you do three cameras, it looks like the monthly service fee would be about the same.
Yeah, they're, they're all in line with one and all.
So do you like the idea of getting one with the solar cellular trail camera already installed at 169?
For 169, the other one comes out to, they're all baked, they're, they wind up right in the ballpark. Yeah, they're all in the ballpark, and these are, these are all reputable.
Yeah, even I've heard of these names, so.
Doesn't make it, it doesn't make a difference, and they're, they're all available. These days, with everything on backwater, these, these cameras are available right now. Yeah, you can get them right now.
Okay, so why don't you make them, why don't you, why don't you move that we get three cameras, make a motion, we get three cameras, and we want them with a solar.
Yes.
Right? We want the solar batteries, and we wanna be able to have it with the cell service, and it will be programmed to the phone of our head constable.
Okay. I make a motion to purchase three phones. I would go with the SpyPoint. I think it's the cheapest one, adding everything else up with it. Make a motion to purchase those and just open up an account going to, for a cell service, going to a particular person.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? No? Okay, motion carries. We'll get three of the SpyPoint. And we'll set up.
I like the name.
Yeah, three of those, and we'll set up the monthly service. Okay, so we can take care of that from here tomorrow.
Yeah, sure.
And then we'll work with our head constable. I'm not sure what phone he has, so we'll work with him.
Okay.
He knows about this, and he's expecting to deal with it, and he hopes he sees some good pictures. And he's retired now, so he's even available during the day. And I happen to know that first 16-bag drop on West Coast, that was, must have been at 5:00 in the evening.
Oh, yeah, so people, they're, they're brazen. It's, it's easy.
So George is available all the time, so this, we hope to, hope this is successful. Thank you.
Sure. I mean, we've done some other cleanups on this road. This road is notorious for people dumping.
The last year, the orange bag day?
That's right.
Yeah.
A toilet.
Yeah.
We had a toilet.
Yep, way down.
There's a lot of tires and.
Yeah.
Other.
And a lot of contractors. Remember the gentleman, Jeff, that worked with us? The guy from the gun club?
Yeah. Yeah, Jeff.
What's his name?
Jeff Blum.
Yes, Blum, yes. So he was with us that day, and he said he has pulled his truck in to stop contractors before that had pulled over on the side of the road, and he said, "What are you doing?" And they said they were just dumping whoever they worked for, told them to dump it there.
Yeah.
They didn't speak English so well, but they were told to go there and drive it off, so.
They hired our guys.
Yeah.
There's almost no gardeners.
Anyway, this will be great.
I think the power is gonna be a big plus.
Sure.
And then we'll move them around.
I think we need the signs. I think the signs would work as well.
Yeah.
Well, we'll have them. Ed will take care of the signs, so they're matching with the town.
Yeah.
What else I could tell you? Somebody might say, "Well, why don't you, the sheriff's department loans out their cameras." But they told me the problem is that they're never free. And, and I said, "Well, we're kind of thinking of a longer term plan."
It's a good investment for us, yeah.
Yeah, I said, "But anyway, if it comes up with anybody," he said, "They're so hard to get your hands on," and he goes, "You wouldn't be able to get three," and, but, so anyway, they recommended that we do what we're doing, so. Okay, excellent. Thank you very much for that. That's gonna, we'll keep our fingers crossed. That'll be nice. Now, that was it for the order of business that we have tonight, so I, at this point, I'm just going to update you on certain things, and then we'll talk about what we're gonna, you know, this will lead to our agenda. We'll go through my normal stack. Bus safety. Okay, Kevin, your idea of treating this like COVID, remember the only problem with bus safety was the contested tickets? And the fact that the contested tickets would have to come to our court. And if they came to our court, we have, they tell us we have to have a prosecutor. And if we have a prosecutor, they're at least $200, $275 an hour, so we're gonna be spending between $400 and $500 for a prosecutor to come in to prosecute a bus safety course, case. I explained to them, and it wasn't until I saw some of the county people in person last night that they really understood what I meant, that we have a low-volume court, and that if that, that case comes in here, and there's no other cases on the docket, then basically, we're in the hole. And because whatever our fine is, and we set our first level court fine, they get their 250, and we only, we get 10% of that. So they're gonna have their own level of fines for people that break this, and that's why they won't let you reduce it to a parking ticket, because they won't get their fine. So that'll have to stay.
Is that their fault or the judges?
In this case, it's their fault.
Really?
Yeah, it's the deal that they have, that they, they, they said that it won't matter if it were the judges or not, that the evidence is so definitive, that they said they've never had anybody not agree. So that being said, I'm sure a judge could, you know, throw their weight around if they disagreed, but they said they never do, because they've got cameras from all of us. So I, you know, until we try it, but anyway, they didn't realize, they said they asked two years ago, but I said, "You know, everything that we do that's got, that's under a state law, they take 90%, we get 10%." Everything we do. So they did, they said, "No, no, Betsy, you're gonna get to keep your fine." And I said, "No, there's, there's."
We get 25 bucks, big deal.
Well, we would get, of the court fine that we came up with was 150, right? That was our first tier that we arranged at like, anyway, we will get $15. And they thought I was either out of my, they said, "No," and I said, "That's the way that it works." So basically, now they understand, and they did not realize that they should have negotiated with the OSC to please adjust that so that we would actually get paid to cover the cost. So the only solution that there is, because the OSC, they tried to do it recently, OSC said, "No, no way." They said.
Yes, delay.
And they said they're not interested in lowering their, their, their take. So we'll always get 10%. So we get $40 for one of these that we had to pay somebody 400 or 500 bucks to come and prosecute. So the only way we can do it is aggregate, and I told them, remember, we were at the last meeting, we were talking about aggregating the cases. We are gonna do these cases every June and December, twice a year, that's it. June, because the kids get out of school, and if they happen to be driving it home, and they go off to college, in December. And we'll aggregate them, and that's about the best we can do, and some of the other, I think, towns are gonna do the same thing if they're small volume. But I mean, literally, what we do in a, in a year here in the Unionville Court, which I guess is why people love to live here, right? It's not, there's not a lot of stuff going on that's bad. But what we do in a year in volume, in La Grange, they, they do it in two weekends, you know, two weekdays of their court. I mean, the same volume in maybe two weeks. I mean, these bigger town, Wappinger, they do it, they have, they've had 400 cases in a day. They had to open up and go all day. So it's, we're kind of quiet here. So they finally understood that we are that quiet, and we are gonna do it twice a year. Does anybody have any objection to that? Because I'm gonna send that, I don't think, we don't have to vote on it. We're just gonna organize it that way. I'm gonna send it to the judges to say, "Schedule them all that way."
I think it'll still be a loss, but it's the only thing we can do.
Yeah.
They wouldn't take it at the county court.
There isn't any statute of limitations for, for what, right?
No. The judge, and plus, you know, the last couple of years, they've pushed so many things off. They're way behind, and things have been delayed and delayed, and so, no, they don't, they said there won't be any problem with doing that. So June and December will, early in December, I guess, it won't interfere with holidays, but.
I'm not opposed to that. When you said our fine, we only get 10% of our fine also?
We were expecting to get 150 of the 150. We were expecting it at 100%, but the, oh, it's a state, you know, these are state laws that they're breaking, and for any state law that they're breaking, they take 90, and we get 10. That's just the way it is, period. Well, that's what I said, well, if they adjusted.
We made our own law, too.
Well, if we had an ordinance, what we can't with bus safety, with the program using their cameras, we won't have the evidence. Their evidence is what clinches the case. And, you know, Martin Lonero's position is, look, it shouldn't be that big of a deal if you do it twice a year, because our hope is that they're paying $250 to bus safety, and it's so high that who's gonna keep doing that? I mean, it's already bad for kids. They're trying to do, they're trying to use it as a deterrent. They're hoping it won't be a big burden on us.
But they're getting 250, or they're getting 225, and then we're gonna charge 150.
For the court costs.
To only get 15 back.
To only get 15 back, and there's.
What's the point for us? Why, you gotta be.
Well, maybe deter them from wanting to go to court.
It's almost like why even do it?
It may deter them from wanting to go to court.
Maybe.
Right? No, no, another 150 on top of what the 250. Yeah, it's not lucrative for us, but it may deter them from wanting to go to court in the first place. It may just pay a fine. Yeah.
It's expensive if they, but, but what the bus safety company says is 3% to 5% contest. And the reason they, most of the time, they found they contested was because they didn't open up their, either the link or the envelope to ship, to see the photograph that has their car, their license plate, and a child walking right next to the car that they blew through on the, you know, right next to a bus. So they say that most, those are the only people that contested, because they haven't looked at the evidence. So they don't feel that there's, we're gonna have much to do here.
Seems like we should be able to repackage that.
Well, the Stanford town, they, they said, "Send them our way. We'll take them." Other towns said they'll take them, because they have very high-volume courts, and it won't matter to them. I mean, we could, but it's a jurisdictional thing. It's jurisdiction. But we have had friendly neighbors who said, "Send them over here," so. But I think if we do it twice a year, and very few are contested, I just.
Hopefully, they don't pass the ball.
Yeah.
Do we do it twice a year and give them the option of going to another town court if they so choose?
I don't think so, because it depends on where the bus, the ticket, the picture was taken. If they, if they do it in, on these rural roads in Unionville, and the picture is here, they know where the locations are.
Okay.
It's gotta be in our court.
Okay.
Anyway, all right, so June and December, it will be two days a year. I've gotta make sure that justices know and court clerk, and we'll, we'll schedule it that way, okay? Next up, the Central Hudson, I'll do this at the regular meeting. I mean, they're really worried about gas leaks caused by damage to pipelines again, and they send out a letter about.
I was gonna say, we have Eric Boy on there.
Well, but they work with, I guess they're connected to various things, and they talk about, and they're, this is a public service message. They talk about Dig Safely New York, you know, that program to remind everybody. Doesn't everybody do that? I know Ed always calls 8-1-1.
Yeah.
It's a republic service reminder. Okay, now here's the big, two, two important things I think are important. Sales tax. Okay. I have so much information about sales tax. Tell, tell me to stop when it gets painful. Two conference calls. Basically, the bottom line is that every 10 years, the sales tax contract is renegotiated between the county, the cities, and the towns.
Yeah.
By state law, only the cities can, cannot opt in to, the cities can set their own sales tax and just say, you know, the rest of you be damned. We're not involving with any of you. That's state law. In our case, Poughkeepsie and Beacon, the two cities in our county have always opted in. And where, because they've never had a huge sales track, you know, good sales tax performance, and the county as a whole is stronger, so that everybody benefits. Beacon, though, has come up a lot, and so they apparently were in a very good negotiating spot this go-round. The law says that they have to have the new contract completed by June. So Mark Molinaro has been working on it with the cities. He's got an agreement from both the cities. What he wants to know is, are any of the towns gonna object? So here's the deal. The deal is, and I, and I have to tell you what the positives, and there are, I don't see a negative. But so in the last 10 years, the first, it used to be. But, um, so in the last ten years, the first, it used to be that the, um, cities got the bulk of the sales tax.
Correct.
They had the best deal. And then when Marcus got elected, so about almost ten years ago, he came in knowing that that was a complaint and they negotiated to the point where the towns did a little bit better than the cities. The cities have been squawking. So this, at this point, is the third go around, he's saying, okay, what, what they did, what, the, the deal that they crafted, which I thought was, um, is pretty smart on their part. Um, the deal they crafted was that the towns are gonna get nine point five percent. Wait a minute. Yeah, I almost said seven, but it's nine point five percent of, um, the sales tax and that's divided on a per capita basis. So they have two hundred and fifty million dollars in sales tax. Nine point five percent goes.
All the towns.
Goes to all the towns, not the cities, goes to all the towns and the towns divided on a per capita basis.
Okay, I see. What's the percentage currently that's before this change?
It's very close. As a matter of fact, I can share, I can share with you, and I've got our last.
Yeah, it's almost the same amount of percentage.
It's almost exactly the same. Um, but the only, the good news is that every, they, when they run their future value calculations, they assume four percent growth a year. And in the last ten years, there's been one down year and it was last year, twenty-one, you know, right after the, I mean, it was twenty, right after the, we did well in twenty-one.
Pandemic.
Yes. So that's been the only down year.
Now with the fuel prices so high.
And we, you know, we're getting a, a growth cap, this inflation factor. So we'll hear our, what we did this year, which is great. But anyway, so the way it's gonna work is, um, we used to have, there, there used to be a guaranteed floor. So during the pandemic, one of the first questions that came up was, okay, where are we with sales tax? Remember when I was reading off, I don't know if you remember this period, but we were reading off, we're not gonna get this, we're not gonna get that. Remember we lost over three hundred thousand dollars in revenue that year, so we had to cut, cut, so we'd be in, you know, we'd be flat at the end of the year, which luckily we were. The sales tax had a twenty-five million dollar base. All the towns were gonna split the twenty-five million, we were guaranteed twenty-five million dollars divided by all the, per capita basis, all the towns. Um, or, and, and that actually twenty-five million included the cities. So our guarantee in this twenty-five million dollar flat, the, the, the basement level was, uh, two hundred and eighteen thousand. So Unionville was guaranteed, when, if all hell broke loose, the county would have to find twenty-five million dollars in sales tax to pay for all of us, no matter where they got it from. That, that baseline is gone. We are gonna get nine point five percent of every dollar that comes in. Of the actual dollars, there's not gonna be, what happened also for the last ten years, there was a growth payment in March. Like we're getting a growth payment, we get a growth payment every March twenty-fifth that goes into, it'll, that's when our, we're gonna officially close our books because it goes into the twenty, twenty-one numbers. So we were guaranteed in that two hundred and eighteen thousand. So now the interesting thing is, I, you know, and I, I think we need to be really cautious with sales tax going forward and we'll talk about that during budget season. But for the last five years, we've had over three hundred thousand, so, uh, like three hundred and forty-six, um, three hundred and twenty, three nineteen. So we put in the budget this year, three hundred. So we thought, okay, we've been at five years of way over nicely amount, over three hundred. So now we put in as our dream. Okay, so what happened this year, which I think is so interesting, is we, we were at two hundred and eleven before our growth payment. So now with our growth payment, we're having the biggest growth payment ever. Our growth payment, part of it's inflation, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars, we're gonna get on March twenty-fifth.
Wow.
So our sales tax for the year is four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars.
Amazing.
Amazing. We budgeted three hundred. So, but when I was talking to Alan Sermon about it, was he gonna vote for it because it has to go before the legislature? He wants to know what the towns think and he's our very good legislators, you know, he always checks in. Um, we had a good discussion about it and he said, same thing Mark Moneiro said, so I'm just putting this plug in. You know, we don't, first of all, Alan's concern is when all the ARPA money's gone and when New York State has gotten finished, all this wild spending they're doing and they go back to, you know, having trouble again.
Yeah.
Please remember that Cuomo at one point said, I'm not giving the sales tax to the counties until I cover my budget. Cuomo used to play games with it. So, and then Mark Moneiro also said, you know, the towns and the cities, everybody has to remember, this is gonna be a great deal. We have for ten years, except for the first year of COVID, gone up four percent every year, Duchess, people like to come here. So we do okay. But we need to be really cautious with that sales tax money. Lower the amount that we're gonna put in for revenue and keep the rest for fund balance or whatever. But we have to, they, everybody's warning that, you know, when all this, you know, Gaga money is gone, the state's gonna be back to the old ways and, and so we have to be cautious going forward.
Yeah.
But for this year, four hundred and fifty-five thousand, we budgeted three hundred, it's, it's nice.
Very nice.
So I think the deal for us going forward is a, is a good deal, other than that this basement going away, which if you're a county legislator, you don't want that flat payment because now you're really in trouble.
You have a risk.
Yeah, there's a risk for the county. Oh, and I forgot to tell you the most important thing. When Marcus, when they negotiated with the cities, Beak, Beak, I can give you, if you're interested, I can give you all, all kinds of information. But they're all go, they're both going up, both, both, uh, Beacon and the city of Poughkeepsie are going up. Beacon's going, their take is one point nine six percent, they're going up to two point six two. Poughkeepsie is currently four point five one, they're going up to six point oh two. So they're very happy with that because they see what happens countywide, it, it goes up. Um, so, but the one thing is that, um, wait a minute, what was I gonna tell you? I told you about the basement going away, there was one thing I wanted to tell you.
Sure, the most important thing.
It was just the most important thing. Gee, I can't remember what it was.
Maybe it wasn't.
Well, the nine point seven, the nine point five is the most important thing. Um, but I can't remember, other than the ceiling going away, there's no negative for us. But there was something, I know it'll come back to me. But anyway, that, that's, the cities are, are happy, both the cities passed their deal. And, um, Marcus has been making all the phone calls to find out what all the towns think. We had conference calls. I wanted to share with you, unless I remember, that one thing I was trying to remember was not negative. I said, I could tell you, but that's, that's really the gist of it. I mean, I reviewed ours, it's a big pickup and they still expect that. Oh, I remember what it was, I'm sorry. The part that's going to the cities, their increase from two to, to, you know, almost three for Beacon and for, that is not coming out of the town's take. That's coming out of the county's take.
Oh.
So it's not gonna affect us.
It's not gonna affect us. So they decided, you know, that at the beginning, it was, the cities did better. And the next ten years, the towns have done better. And now Marcus said they agreed that the county would give up for the two cities, towns will stay about the same. Smart deal.
Yeah, well.
So I don't have any issues with it, but.
Sounds good to me.
So I think what I'll do is I'll just write it up for the meeting and we'll vote on it. And then it'll be official for them because they're gonna probably come around and wanna count. I know Alan wanted to know what we thought and I said, we're not meeting till tonight. So, um, the legislature is voting in, in the next couple of weeks. So I think we'll be in good shape.
They're voting before our sixteenth meeting?
I don't know when they're voting. I think that's, I, I don't think they have to vote until, um, April or May, they have to have it done by June.
Okay.
So they've got lots of time.
All right.
Yeah, they're making the rounds. Yes.
I had a discussion on the, uh, was it a hundred and ten dollars less on clothing? How that would affect the sales tax revenue?
Yeah, you know, that's a good question. So I don't know, I don't remember how long that lasts. Is it a month, six weeks, something like that? I don't know, but it's less than a hundred and ten dollars. That i- in, in their budget, uh, um, analysis, they, that, they will remove, that removes twelve to fourteen million dollars out of the, uh, sales tax coffers. That's a lot of, I didn't, I never thought.
Everybody's spending it on energy.
You know, they're, yeah, they're paying their heating and their.
Yeah, gasoline and a lot.
Yeah. I mean, it's a nice thing. I, I can see why they do it. I mean, they used to run that in, in New York City for, you know, two weeks out of the year. That kind of thing for Christmas or whatever. And, um, it, people would run to spend the money, but I didn't know it was twelve to fourteen million dollars out of the sales tax coffers. Yeah. All right, any more questions about sales tax? How much detail do you think, I'm gonna go into a little bit of detail in the meeting just so the folks have it. I'll write up a little paragraph. It, it, I think you're more interested, I think the folks wanna know that we budgeted three hundred, we're over four fifty-five and we got a good deal going forward. Yeah, and then we'll answer any questions. Okay, and the only other thing I have, because we have stuff from our previous meeting that's holding over, that's gonna be in our next meeting. And I think next meeting, we also have to talk about, um, the things that we wanna, we do need to spend our money on, especially the ARPA money.
Yeah.
And I wanna add some things to our list, um, for you to think about. Both George Colb and Jake and I have been talking about the, the, this particular roof also. I don't know that we should leave this for a future, uh, group to have to deal with because roofs are so expensive. But this roof is past life expectancy by a couple of years. So George says, you know, you, you're, this is gonna be your next burden. After you do that one, you're gonna have to do this one. And that's also something to consider because otherwise you're talking about a big, it's a big bill for a future, um, for, a, a future board that may not, they're never gonna have ARPA money again. So I'm gonna put that on our list to talk about, okay? So if you give it some thought, all right.
This one's not big yet, right?
Not that we know of.
It still looks pretty good. I mean, I know it's past the typical license, but.
Oh, gosh, I was just gonna say, we could encumber the funds and save it, but I, put a reserve.
Ninety-five.
We could set up a reserve account. Ninety-three. Well, the building was built ninety-three. It was dedicated ninety-three, according to the hallway plaque.
So it'll be thirty years next year.
Yeah.
Roofing channels is gonna be through the roof.
Yeah.
Could you imagine with the cost of.
Yeah, with asphalt, yeah.
Well, I mean, I don't know if we're allowed, we can't, I don't think we can reserve money out of ARPA funds, we have to spend it. So maybe we look.
On other stuff.
We'll spend it on one of the other projects and maybe put a reserve fund aside for the future roof from a fund balance or something. Oh, that is, that's on the list.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's on the list. So, okay. So the next thing I wanted the board members to take a look at, if, um, you would, you can take this home and look these. Oh, Andrea's gonna do it, thank you. I think we've missed the, the boat on this a couple of times before because, and I'm not gonna name any names or locations, but on occasion, um, we have some safety issues on some tiny little parcels like corners and little triangles up in different places. Um, and I just think we, whenever this list comes in, we need to review it. This is the list that the, um, the Duchess County, these are the lists of properties that Duchess County is gonna foreclose on.
Yep.
And they have written and asked us if we are interested in any of these parcels. And the reason I'm distributing this is because I want everybody to be aware. But I, there is one on here, if you go, when you look at these parcel numbers, there is one on here that caught my eye because it's one of those tiny little corners where sometimes people dump garbage or do things that.
About Tompkins.
And nobody pays attention to it and, or the grass grows so completely high that it's hard for cars to get, you know, these little corners that are not worth much, so people aren't interested in them become, can become hazardous. And I wanted you to be aware that these are the ones that are on the list. And, um, we have, there's a date that they, they're waiting to auction, they auction these later after the, every municipality looks at the, this list in their town. If they do, I mean, unless they miss the mail, um, before the final book is printed by the county. So I think, um, we should take a look at this and that little one, uh, you know, just because I, you know, and I think we can get, we can get Ed's opinion and George's opinion. I, I just think that, I don't, you know, more hazards we don't need, we don't need dumb, and I don't know who, um, if we don't, who's gonna take care of them type of thing. And it's just that little one.
I said, I'd rather buy a camera than buy that piece of property.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know that we have to, I, I was gonna ask them, do we really have to pay for it? Can't you just give it to us?
No, they won't give it to you.
Well, I don't, they're trying.
They got an auction.
The amount, the amount that's here is the amount that they owe in sales tax, I mean, in county taxes.
Yeah, point five one acre, one point one five. That's nothing.
Bargain for the bus.
That's what I'm telling you, those are the ones that nobody wants.
Yeah, you can't do anything with it.
That's why they become safety hazards.
It's only valuable to, to, at that point.
Well, we know what, the last time, what happened.
That must be on the North Close side or is on the, on the eighty-two side?
North Close side. I think when I looked it up, it was on the North Close side.
I'd rather see that intersection be improved and use that property accordingly. It's not a very good intersection.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is pretty bad for them now.
Well, would you, would you mind looking at this list and the parcels? And then, and then maybe if you have suggestions or things that we can do, I mean, I, if we just let it go and nobody buys it, it's, it's gonna be a.
It's the county's problem then.
Not really.
What do they do if nobody bids?
I don't, what, what do they, nobody bids? I think they, um, they probably lower their price. They don't want it, they don't want the property.
They don't have a price and it's a bid. You could bid ten dollars and get it, it's theoretically.
So there you go.
But, um.
They owe us a favor. They owe us some favors.
I mean, people buy weapons, sight unseen, they'll pay money for them and then they can't do anything with it.
Well, one of these properties has no, one of these properties has no road front.
Yeah. Yeah, ten acres, ten and a quarter acre, or ten point one four acres.
It might be landlocked.
It is landlocked, because I mean, there's no, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know that you can't, Kevin, you can't develop anything without a frontage, right? Yeah.
Or a helicopter somehow.
What's that?
Or a helicopter.
That's true. Well, we, we'll be, uh, we'll be discussing design standards for helipads. Okay, well, if you take a look at those and if you have comments, um, it doesn't have to be on the next month's agenda. I mean, it's not, it's just.
I'm gonna look at the piece.
Look at the pieces and see if, and I'm gonna talk to Ed and George and if, if we're concerned about it, and I'll find out from the county, how low they'll go.
Well, it depends on anybody else's interest.
Yeah, I think they're realists though. They don't, they don't wanna be, it's like a bank, they, they don't really wanna take back properties. So they're, you know, we'll see. But take a look at these and then, um. Yeah, on, on some of these parcels, I mean, I don't know, if you're landlocked, how does that work? I don't, I don't know. Well, it's an interesting situation because there's another ten or plus acres right next to it, owned by the same guy.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, and I think he's, he's obviously letting this go. So I don't know. I don't know the, I don't know any backstories, I just. Interesting. Interesting, yeah. But I think that it's the little tiny things that nobody wants that I'm worried become safety hazards. So let's contemplate it and maybe talk to George and, um, Ed and then see.
All right.
And then, and then if you have some ideas, give me a call or send an email, we'll distribute it. And then if we take any action, we'll do it in the board meeting, but, um, otherwise, we're just doing research. Oh, I was gonna save these in case anybody wanted it, here I am taking it back. Um, now, um, the only other, we're working, we're gonna be working a lot on the moratorium and on the town center. Pat, Councilman Welsh, myself, Councilman Durland, um, Jim, our attorney, Jim Nelson, Nan Stoltenberg, our planner. It's gonna be a lot of hours, um, and, and then we're working on, um, the MS four project, which is, we're really studying, um, the rules on the stormwater requirements in the town as they, they really enlarge them this year, which they're doing, you know, Albany's doing a lot of that in every, a lot of categories. Um, and we're gonna do our best to see if we can get a waiver and just continue to manage it from a conservation standpoint like we do now. We like, we apply those standards all over town and we can continue to do that. But to make it three times as expensive for us is not really fair. So we're gonna, we're working on that. Um, what else are we working on? We have, um, a lot of stuff going on, the CAC is working on their projects. We're gonna come back and talk about, um, the resolution, the, the resolution for the, um, expanding the, well, we already took care of the senior citizens, uh, but that's a local law. So we will have a public hearing on the senior citizens, you know, the, the, uh, expanding the exemptions for them. Um, expanding residency requirements for planning board members. Um, and then I hope, so that, those will be two back-to-back public hearings on, in March sixteenth. And, um, where we, we get people to hopefully come in and comment. And then we'll hopefully have the, the plan laid out for the library consultant. And when the community engagement sessions are gonna be, I know his intention is to have some in person and some on Zoom. He's trying to capture different people, um, so he, he'll lay that plan out for us and we can share that. Um, by then, we might be able to introduce Laura Sumner, who is our new library services coordinator. So she's been working hard, uh, on, on going through, uh, our, with our vendors and the things that we have and how we're gonna hook it up better to the website because that, that broke at one point and it's hard to get that fixed. But they've made fabulous strides at the, with our vendor at the company where we can go in and have a platform for residents to use right away. So that we've got to rehook up, yeah, so the strides have been great. So digital is, um, it, you know, the good news is that this is a digital offering that we have and the, and their digital platform is what this, Baker Taylor's been working on. So anyway, that'll be a good, that'll be a good explanation for that meeting and that's really our agenda for the next meeting.
Okay.
So, yeah, March sixteenth, two public hearings, updates on MS four, uh, sales tax for the residents to understand, moratorium. uh, sales tax for the residents to understand, moratorium. If there's any questions, that public hearing won't be until April. I'll just tell, we're just gonna talk about it as saying, the resolution introduction was introduced, come, come back in two weeks. And then the follow-up on anything, you know, the regular things that are getting ready for summer and all that stuff.
Alright.
Oh, there is one thing I really think we need to talk about. One last thing, Timor Park, we have our anniversary party scheduled for July ninth. I think we need some, I think we need some residents, I think we need some help to plan it as a real party. Meaning, our plan is to do it like from a four to nine, like the band is gonna stop, Mike McPartland, who you know, books a lot of bands, he's got a band for us. And um, a really fun band, the people like the place through the decades. And we need all the residents to come out and we want it to be a celebration of the park, but more of a party celebration. We're not gonna have a lot of, we're gonna have some, we're, we're probably, we're, we're planning on trying to have some intermittent speakers to share nuggets of information, but we're not gonna have thirty-minute presentations. So to make it very festive and a real celebration of this beautiful park that we have. So we need people that, we'd love to have people come on board and help us plan it. I think having the band is important because, you know, they booked themselves and, and we'd never have them, so we got Mike to work on that early. Um, and then we can, you know, work around it and we're, and it's gonna be out by the, where the stage is, all around there. And we can do almost whatever we want to celebratory. But we want all the residents to come out, you know, everybody, anybody that has ideas, we can incorporate them, but it should be a really fun celebration and so if you know of anybody that would like to volunteer, we'd love to have them come to our meetings and, you know, then we'll lay out the plan and we put extra money in the budget to, to have this celebration. So.
Sounds good.
Okay, so if you know anybody or if you guys can spend some, you have any good ideas, share them. Fun things, this is all fun. And hail, hail, you know, Timor Park, it's gonna be that kind of thing.
Good.
Alright, that's all I have. That's gonna be our next meeting, does anybody have anything else you wanna add?
One thing about the moratorium.
Yeah.
It's important that we let everybody know that this public hearing is about just the moratorium, not about changes. You know, I think that people might think they're gonna come here and.
Good point, yeah.
That there's good changes in the code, this public hearing is solely just on.
Just about.
Just about.
Yeah, I, yeah, we'll make that clear. We'll talk about that on February sixteen. Because I think that until we have the plan in place with all the ideas, that's what they're waiting to hear.
Exactly.
Yeah.
It's important that the public knows that.
Yeah.
The public hearing is solely just about the moratorium, not changes in the code.
Well, when we put, when we send out the letter, we'll also put that in the letter because the letter's going out to all the contiguous, all the, the property owners so that they know they've got time, but they, if they have two, so they wanna add some suggestions, they can do that.
Yeah, there'll be a public hearing another time for the county.
Oh, yeah, definitely a separate public hearing for the ideas, but yeah, I'll, let me make a note of that, Pat, I will make sure that we mention that. Anybody have anything else? I think, yeah, we, we got done what we came here to do tonight.
Good.
Alright, we have a motion.
Motion adjourned.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Thank you gentlemen and ladies for coming.